There are 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Vice Chair Rubenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Niblin.
Here.
Commissioner Krasky.
Here.
Commissioner Bigstik.
Present.
Commissioner Bigstik, would you lead us to the flute?
Certainly.
Onto administrative business. First, the approval of the Order of Agenda. Commissioner Niblin.
I'll move approval of the Order of Agenda.
Commissioner Krasky.
Yeah, I second that motion.
Okay, please vote.
I pressed the wrong button.
Still approved. And then next up is the order of the approval of the minutes, which we have none. And on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes.
Chair, we were sent minutes from the last meeting. We were sent minutes from the last meeting. I don't know if they...
Yeah, they were included in the packet, the minutes from January 21st, although the agenda does say that there are none for action.
Through the chair, those were in draft format at this point. We will put them back on the agenda when staff is through reviewing them for adoption.
So for at our next meeting. So if anybody has anything to speak about that's not on the agenda, you can do that now. There's nobody coming up, so we'll move on to the public hearing. First up is condition of draft local coastal land use plan of local coastal program, LCP, and recommendation to city council. The recommended SECO action is statutory exempt, SECO guidelines 15265. The recommended action is adopt the attached resolution. Staff communication?
Good evening, honorable commissioners. I'm senior planner Christian Murdock. This evening, we are continuing the public hearing which began on Tuesday, January 21st. The commission's role this evening is to receive public comment, to deliberate on the post-consultation draft local coastal land use plan, or LCLUP, and ultimately to make a recommendation to the city council on the document. Following the Planning Commission's review of the post-consultation draft LCLUP, the next step is to bring the plan before the city council for review and adoption. Following city council adoption, the final draft LCLUP will be sent to the Coastal Commission for review and certification. The Coastal Commission has 90 days to certify the LCLUP, but may exercise a 12-month extension. Depending on the Coastal Commission's action, the plan may need to return to the city council for further consideration. The LCLUP is a policy document for the long-range development and protection of resources in Pacifica's coastal zone. The coastal zone in Pacifica is comprised of all areas west of Highway 1 and the Sheldon Dance Nursery area located east of Highway 1. The city's current LCLUP dates to 1980. Due to the plan's age, and more importantly, the changed conditions within the coastal zone over the last 40 years, an LCLUP update is long overdue. New areas of the coastal zone have developed or redeveloped since 1980, and new planning issues have arisen since then which call for updated policy approaches to address them. The post-consultation draft LCLUP before the commission for consideration this evening is largely the same as that presented to the commission on January 21st. However, in light of the Planning Commission's continuance of the public hearing, staff revisited the public comments submitted on the document, and in a limited number of instances, has proposed further changes to the document. The majority of these changes would not affect the policy provisions of the LCLUP, and therefore were not individually identified in the staff report, although the edits are shown in redline format. A small number of these proposed changes would have policy implications. Staff has identified these as substantive changes and included explanations of the proposed changes in section 3. B of the staff report. There's also one property owner request which staff recommends granting, and that is described in section 3. C of the staff report. The commission may recall there were three other property owner requests which it may consider that were described in section 6 of the January 21st staff report, starting on page 102 of that packet, although staff has not recommended granting those property owner requests. I want to take a moment to expand upon one of the proposed substantive changes which regards staff's attempt to clarify the coastal residential mixed-use land use designation and its application to the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site, also known as the Calson property. You may recall that property owner Cheryl Calson stated in her written and oral comments at the January 21st meeting that she was seeking clarity from the city in the language of those policies due to ambiguities which she perceived. The changes proposed by staff which are outlined in attachment H were an attempt to provide the clarity Ms. Calson requested. However, subsequent to publication of the agenda packet, Ms. Calson requested a meeting with staff to explain continued concerns she had about the language. Staff met with Ms. Calson this morning and gained an improved understanding of her concerns. In hopes of providing maximum clarity for the owner of the property affected by the coastal residential mixed-use land use designation and by policy LDI 20, staff has proposed further edits to the language of these two items. Staff has provided the commissioners with a separate exhibit demonstrating the proposed language and made copies available for the public at the rear of the council chambers. The thrust of the changes is to clarify that any project which contains residential development must also contain commercial development, although the residential development may occur in structures that are detached and completely separate from commercial uses. Staff received written public comments both before and after publication of the agenda packet for this meeting. Those comments received after publication of the agenda packet have been provided to the commissioners and placed at the rear of the council chambers for the public to review. Staff also included the written public comments received at the January 21st public hearing as an attachment to the staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, after receiving public comment and deliberating, should adopt the attached resolution. Please note that since this is a legislative matter, the commission will require four affirmative votes by the commission for adoption. Staff has prepared two motions for the commission's convenience. The first motion would include the substantive changes proposed by staff as detailed in attachment H. In light of the meeting with Ms. Calson I described earlier in my presentation, staff would suggest that any motion based on this sample motion also include explicit incorporation of the further edits described in the exhibit presented this evening. The second motion would include the substantive changes proposed by staff and also the property owner request at 184 Paloma Avenue. As with the preceding motion, staff recommends explicitly incorporating the further edits described in the exhibit presented this evening. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Bigstik?
Thank you. And thank you for putting in that second version of the motion. Makes life easier, and I was hoping to get that sort out on the first night, so it's nice not to have to think about it on this night. And thank you also for adjusting the language in CR-I-4. So I had a couple questions about, well, I had one about chapter 3. There's some mentioning of schools in conjunction with usable park space. And I thought the question had been raised at one of the study sessions, though I might be recalling that wrong, but I'm under the impression that at the various schools, their park space is not readily available for public use. Am I mistaken in that?
So...
And these are 316, 318, 319 is where I'm seeing specific references. Especially 318 and 319.
So it's my recollection from the study sessions and looking into this issue that as a general matter, you're correct, many of the public recreational, public school recreational facilities are not widely available for public use. It's my understanding that there may be some limited instances where there are shared use agreements, and in any case, the LCLUP and the general plan similarly encourage wider use of those agreements where the city can enter into them with the school districts that are in town.
So the idea is by keeping this language in, even though it's maybe not readily available in this moment, it might make it more readily available down the road?
We certainly want to make sure there's policy support in the LCLUP and the general plan to expand upon those types of agreements whenever possible.
Thank you very much. Another question, because one of the letters we received had to do with the EQ basin. My understanding, as I was reading through, because a similar question occurred to me, but the way I was figuring it was, well, at the end of the day, the equalization basin doesn't occur in the coastal zone, and that's probably why it's not included in here. So please correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. The equalization basin or EQ basin, it's a piece of infrastructure the city has constructed. It's located outside of the coastal zone. It is integrated through the sewer collection system with infrastructure that is in the coastal zone, including the Lindemar Pump Station, sewer mains, and the Clara Creek Water Recycling Plant. I'm not sure that at this time we need to expand the analysis to mention the equalization basin. So I think the LCP, LUP as written, is adequate without those changes. Okay, thank you very much.
Kind of a similar question. There was a comment from the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance that talked about inserting some language regarding improvements of the stormwater drainage system to Pacifica City streets. It's SFPG-12, and they had, they were going to insert that into the flood protection language at CR-I-27. And they talked about the fact that it's getting, there's a lot of stormwater that comes from, it looks like, the other side of the, outside of the coastal area coming into the park, but it, since it is kind of affecting something in the coastal zone, is that something that is being considered by building or planning? It seems like a good idea to keep it in.
Right, so several ways to answer that question. So first, the policy that was referenced in chapter 6, specifically dealing, that chapter specifically is dealing with coastal resiliency. Those policies are specifically designed, or that one in particular, to address any breach of the golf course seawall, or if that is ever not maintained. There are other areas of the general plan specifically that deal with the city and public works maintenance of our stormwater collection system, review of our stormwater collection system, to make sure that it's adequate and it's addressing flows from other areas of town.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Berman?
I just want to echo the appreciation of staff's efforts in creating this subsequent staff report. It was really helpful, thank you. A couple items that I noticed, just flipping through again over the past week. So on figure 2-3, so in land use, section 2, I was looking at the Esplanade Avenue area, and I know in the staff report there was mention of changing the land use of some of the lots, which I'm supportive of, but I noticed there's other, I think there's three other lots along Esplanade Avenue that are currently proposed as high-density residential, but they look vacant. I just looked, you know, if you look on Google Earth, they look vacant. I'm wondering why those are not proposed to be conservation.
Sure, so I think you're probably referring to the lots on the 300 block of Esplanade. They're formerly known as, I think, 300, 310, or 310, 320, and 330 Esplanade, rather. Perhaps others on the staff team have more updated information. It was my understanding that those still remain in private ownership, and so to designate them as conservation may not be appropriate at this time. That would deprive them of all development potential. If, you know, to consider some other land use designation that has development potential is something to discuss, but conservation specifically would not be appropriate.
Sure.
So long as they're in private ownership.
In that case, would the residential slash open space slash agriculture designation be appropriate?
It would probably require a bit more analysis by staff to figure out the approximate lot sizes and to determine if that would allow them to build even one residence.
Sure.
Or one dwelling unit. That residential open space agriculture is based on more than five acres per dwelling unit. Those sites are significantly smaller than five acres each, and so we could still result in a difficult circumstance for a property owner to have economic use of the property.
Okay. I mean, my thought, because I had a feeling that maybe they were privately owned, and that's why the land use had to remain high-density residential, but at the same time, there's other locations throughout the city where we are redesignating owned land. Granted, we're not designating it as conservation, which wouldn't make sense, I understand that, but I'm wondering if we could find a more appropriate designation, so if those lots become under separate ownership?
Yes, I think it's a fair point. If we could perhaps revisit that a bit later in the hearing this evening, we could attempt to come up with a recommendation that might
Okay.
...fit that circumstance.
Thank you. And then one other item, figure, in section 3, figure 3-4. I actually noticed this, this weekend, when I was out by Taco Bell, not eating at Taco Bell, but walking along the beach. It looks like the proposed bike network figure identifies a Class 1 facility through the Taco Bell parking lot, but I don't believe there is one. And actually, there were several bikers that kind of just biked over the dirt through the ADA access path, and it was, I think, kind of an unsafe interaction. I'm wondering, is, given that this figure proposes Class 1 to be upgraded, so a facility to be upgraded, is there a plan to go through that lot or around it?
Sure, I think it would be my assessment of this map that perhaps at the scale it was created, the people preparing it didn't have that level of familiarity. That break that you're talking about is a relatively small linear distance, and so either, if it's reflected in this figure, it's not shown given the scale, but more importantly, I think we need to at least annotate the map to be clear that there appears to be a break in the Class 1 trail in that location.
I think that would be beneficial, and also for an incentive to possibly continue that connection somehow, if possible in the future. That's all I have for now.
Any other questions for staff? I'd like to open it up for a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, please, please fill out a card and bring it up, and we can The cards are in the back, and then just bring them up to staff, and we'll... My first speaker is Mark Stechbart or Steichbart? Oh, hi. Yep.
Thank you. I have an amendment in front of you folks to discuss and maybe codify what city council has dealt with over the past six months. It got sort of washed out in the redline discussion, maybe four or five months ago, but I think it's pertinent here, that there's a very clear, demonstrated protection for businesses, homes, and infrastructure west of Highway 1. The rest of this is to deal with Jeff Gayer's comments, because he's not here tonight. So my point of view on this stuff is the existing structure, non-conforming structure, and redevelopment are really all a bunch of words put around a policy that is absolutely suicide for this community, and it talks about remodel. So the 1977 date is also corrosive. What it means is for 43 years, from '77, residents have been getting approvals for remodel. And remodel, in its total form, is a couple 2x4s up on the property and maybe one wall, and you totally rebuild a house. That falls into this trap. So for 43 years, people have been pulling permits, coming to this Planning Commission for approval, and now they're in a Coastal Commission trap. That is fundamentally unfair. Nobody warned them, even three weeks ago, if you come in for major remodel, you're in the Coastal Commission trap. So that has got to get fixed. Non-conforming, that's in. So we have 200 signatures on the website submitted to you as evidence on managed retreat. The real benefit on managed retreat was shown last November, when it was universally rejected, and John Keener got beat. People in this town don't want managed retreat. Other issues, I think, in the 1977 remodel trap, you will catch the Lighthouse Hotel, Ingrid V. Lacy Middle School, our new $50 million sewer plant, all the new stores at Pedro Point, which are very cool, and Pac-Manor are in the remodel trap. And they don't know it. I would urge you to also abandon the maps. If the doctrine is going to be everything east of our shoreline protections stays dry, those maps are redundant. They're not going to be considered by any city council that I have any confidence in writing off a billion dollars' worth of real estate. So the maps are unusable, because the public policy will not support it. And council, I don't believe, is buying it. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Richard Harris.
Evening commissioners, I'm Richard Harris, and I'm with the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance. I've submitted a letter today to try and catch up with the moving target of the renovated, of the revised draft, and I tried to bring you current with that. There are, first, to Commissioner Bigstik's question on the fluvial flooding. The plan deals with both ocean and flooding from the inland. And the two provisions that I, we've requested, an insertion of some language to deal with are at CR-I-26 and 27, and they both deal with the issue of flooding coming from the inland to the neighborhoods. And a very substantial contributor to that is Pacifica's own stormwater drainage system. I gave you a map that shows all those little blue lines, and I think it's nine or 10 streets plus, plus the highway. That can be, I think, should be dealt with by the five or six words that I proposed to add, that that just be looked into when, when the city is looking at other measures to deal with the fluvial flooding. So that's, so that's that one. Most of the issues that we dealt with in our, in our prior comments have been resolved to our satisfaction in the current draft. There are about six or seven issues, 12 points, around six or seven issues that I outline at page 2 of today's letter. Several of the points are simply drafting points, which is the applicable law, and I believe that the Coastal Act should be cited and linked. The appendix A only cites section 3, which is one of 10 sections. I think you can incorporate the whole act with a link. I've shown, I've suggested a way to do that in my comment. The, a couple of other issues are the draft update and the, and the adaptation plan. The city provided in its goals in May, well, it's, it's on page, I'm sorry, I couldn't get all I had to say. I've got it in my letter. It's on the second page, and I give you detailed sites. Ash can look at it carefully. Thank you, Berman.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rob Verco. Verlo?
Thanks again for taking time out of your busy schedule. I just have a few things to say today. I appreciate the time and consideration both by the staffers and the Planning Commission with the updates that went into the last change. I've actually reviewed them extensively since I received them. One thing that is still a bit unclear to us is the why we want to make a land use change in the Pedro Point-Colson property. I don't see any rationale that actually explicitly says why we're changing the recommendation from 1980, and I think that's something that we do need to address. I've heard a number of things around, we need more housing, we need more revenue, and I can only imagine what it's like to kind of be King Solomon trying to balance these different things. If we were, if the reason why we are changing it to make things residential mixed-use is to drive more residential, when I go back and look at the plan in 1980, they projected about 40,000 people, 46,000 people would live in Pacifica in the year 2000. Simple Google search, be about 40,000 people to live here. So I'm trying to understand just if housing and housing, need for housing is a key driver, what are some of the quantitative measures that you're using to employ to make these decisions? Because without that rationale, I go back to what I said last time I was up here, and I'll just continue to say the same thing over and over again. We need to have more rational quantitative reasons as to why we are making changes to the original plan. To make concessions and say, well, it was, you know, coastal commercial, but we've changed that to mixed-use, you know, it just sounds like we're hedging something that has not been provided to us to have context or clarity as to why this makes sense. See, I have to go to home to my neighborhood every day, right? So I'm going to drive past something that's changed, and for the duration of me paying my mortgage, I'm going to wonder, why did they make that change? Why did the neighborhood, why did the character of the neighborhood change? Or why are there more people living here now in a very small neighborhood as it is? Why are these things changing? If you know why, you can kind of get a sense of how and work with the change, but without that, essentially, it appears that the recommendations have come from a vacuum. And so I think you guys take really good, kind consideration when going into this, and I would just ask that as we look at some of the reasons why we're making the change, that we're a bit more explicit as to why we're making it. And I think it's a rather easy thing to ask. When I go through and I look at the previous document, and they mention number of occupants per resident, talk about housing density, they talk about preserving the nature of the neighborhood. I'm new to this, but I've read these documents, but based upon the proposal that I've seen with the newest changes in the other documents, it does seem like there's a bit of disconnect from the original documents and the intent in which they were trying to preserve or trying to set forth with these recommendations. So I ask you again, and I'll ask the same question in front of the city council next time, in the letters that we write, why are we making the change, and what quantitative or empirical research have we made to make such decisions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you all for your time. I, going over the recent changes with regard to the local coastal plan, managed retreat, sea level rise, so on and so forth, a big question that is just seemingly keep coming up is definitions, new development, old development, classifications, similar to what Mr. Stechbart just mentioned. For instance, my house actually predates City of Pacifica records. In fact, it may in fact be a historical landmark, because it may actually be nearly 100 years old. However, a couple years ago, I made the unfortunate mistake of putting a new roof on my house. A new roof reclassified it as a new development. That's pretty bizarre. And now, God help anybody that, you know, says anything bad, but if there's a fire at my house, now I have, I cannot rebuild per the same of what I had existing. If that fire takes out, say, half of the house, that one half of the house in order to rebuild, that I have insurance for, now has to be jimmy-rigged together in order to fulfill the new development classification. That doesn't make any sense. We need to be very clear on not screwing up people with these different types of terminologies. So what we really should be doing is like putting an actual date on it, say... Say, five years from now, we're going to implement new development. Give the existing people a chance to actually do whatever kooky remodels they want to do, put a new roof on, do reasonable upgrades without the classification of this 1977 landmark. I think it's really important to understand the implications of these terminologies that are not clear right now. And I just gave one scenario. Think about it, just one scenario, a fire. Fire's a normal thing, right? But all of a sudden, a 100-year-old house has to change completely and may in fact not even be able to be rebuilt, all depending on whether the Coastal Commission is feeling up for it. So thank you for your time, and I know that it's a ton of hard work, and we're all, I know that we actively debate, but we're behind you. So thank you.
Thank you. Victor Carmichael.
Hi. My comments are going to be more general and possibly even somewhat redundant. The version of the local coastal land use plan before us should no longer be considered controversial. All the elements that caused grief and anxiety, reference to managed retreat, or questionable cost-benefit analysis have entirely been removed or patiently explained and justified. Managed retreat, that dreaded and demonized concept, no longer resides in the local coastal plan update, is only mentioned as a last resort presumably if circumstances demand it, and then through an amended local coastal plan. So here we are with a plan that we hope the Coastal Commission will accept by relying on business as usual, rocks, seawalls, and such, also maybe more sand. As we conveniently assume we can proceed into serious sea level rise era, there will be a flow of county, we're assuming there will be a flow of county, state, and federal funds to bolster and/or re-engineer our seawalls, our revetment, and maybe pump in a lot of extra sand for who knows where, and of course, the right grain. Also, there's something called artificial headlands mentioned. I don't know if anybody's ever seen one. I think I've seen them in Barcelona, and they're very artificial-looking, and they look very expensive. Okay. One would assume that the Coastal Commission takes a longer view of things as they are responsible for the entire coast. The Coastal Commission knows there will never be enough state money to rescue all the vulnerable properties along the entire populated stretch of the California coast. So we proceed more deep, as we proceed more deeply into the sea level rise era. It knows it needs to discourage more building in the add-risk zone, a zone not like floodplains, not like barrier islands. But of course, the properties and land use in coastal plain zone are still super valuable, so they can be discouraged development, they tend to discourage development bureaucratically. Hence, we are making, they are making it more difficult by no longer allowing structures that require further armoring, or as is controversial tonight, requiring extensive rebuilding of the structures. And they're being accused, of course, regulatory overreach. From an objective point of view, development should be probably stopped in the entire coastal zone. And finally, a word about the notorious red line that shows what will be left under the worst-case sea level rise scenario by the year 2100. If not enough is done to prevent it with seawalls and revetment. Well, I'd say don't throw those maps away. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Bothon.
Need some glasses to do this. Pacifica's coastal zone has been under attack from the Coastal Commission ever since it used managed retreat to disenfranchise everyone and everything west of Route 1. I'm here tonight to support the protection of the entire coastal zone and everything in it. The Sharp Park District in particular is the most vulnerable to these attacks. It's the working, beating heart of Pacifica, contains an eclectic mix of affordable housing, including mobile homes, apartments, cottages, and single-family homes. It also contains many of our vital businesses and our greatest businesses, and our greatest recreation opportunities, namely the pier, beautiful Sharp Park Golf Course, and of course, the adjacent beaches and trails of Maury Point. There aren't many places in California where working folks can aspire to live and play by the sea. We usually think of places like Newport Beach or La Jolla when we think of coastal living, but those are not attainable to most people. Pacifica is blessed with a natural beauty that rivals and even exceeds some of those cities. It's also accessible at a relatively low cost compared to our southern neighbors. Where else can you find a Taco Bell on the beach? The Coastal Commission's new environmental justice policy calls for the protection of existing housing and lower-cost recreational opportunities. This is in line with the goals that were stated by the city council in March of 2018. So all we're asking of the Commission and the city is to acknowledge and enforce its own policies in the place where it is most relevant, Pacifica. We ask this not just for ourselves, but for all the people who come here from all over Northern California to beat the summer heat. So finally, environmental justice is for people and the places where they live, work, and play, not just grains of sand. As I've pointed out many times, the cost of protecting these great resources by strengthening our coastal armor in key places is only a fraction of the cost to displace people, businesses, and infrastructure. Let's act now to preserve these priceless resources. Let's do the right thing and protect the coastal zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Dani Estrella.
Thanks for the time to speak with you tonight. I'm addressing the Carlson property issue. Mr. Murdock gives an update of the meeting with Cheryl Carlson today regarding the clarification of the land use designation for the property that sounded to me like a major shift from commercial-residential with now having commercial with a detached, or having residential with a detached commercial. That sounds to me like a new definition of residential with an option for commercial. So that needs to be clarified, and there should be a requirement that any commercial-residential has to have a, an active commercial unit operating, because we already have a commercial-residential unit with a non-operating commercial unit, or was non-operating commercial for several years. But my main point, my request to all of you is this, is that this process of reviewing the general plan update, the local coastal plan required or requested the community input, and there were several meetings about this, meeting throughout the city to give everybody an opportunity to address their issues and express their opinions. But in spite of the overwhelming opposition to residential in the Carlson property and all the evidence that's been provided to you that shows that the development of this property is unsuitable, my request to you is this: What is the source, the driving force that keeps pushing us to residential? Is it only Ron and Cheryl Carlson? Is it the members of our planning commission, or the, not the, the planning commission, but our city council who work in the development industry? There's an appearance of bias here that seems very unfair, that in spite of the strong community opposition to this, we keep coming up to the same situation. We're still creeping up residential, commercial residential, but now residential with a detached commercial. I'm putting this out there, and I ask you to really explain and clarify what's going on here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Kremer.
Our community has become very polarized over the topic of managed retreat, and I'm very concerned that this polarization is interfering with our ability to do essential long-term planning. Sea level rise is a near certainty, but we don't know precisely the time course of that rise. Given the geology of our region compared to the East Coast, it's likely that net rise will proceed more slowly. But given the power of seasonal weather patterns such as strong El Nino winters, increased rates of bluff erosion and coastal flooding will challenge Pacifica. The details vary from one neighborhood to another, but these problems, which are not new, will only become worse in the future. I'm hopeful that Pacifica can submit a coastal land use plan that would be approved by the California Coastal Commission, but to do that, we need to show that we have done serious, long-term planning for our community's future. The current plan does not do this. Coastline armoring and beach nourishment are neither, are the dominant actions proposed in the current plan. Neither of these is fiscally realistic, and both have proven shortcomings in how effective they are at maintaining beaches, especially in high-energy coastlines such as ours. I'm particularly concerned with the frequent reference to beach renourishment in the current plan, that it is not only fiscally unrealistic, but also irresponsible because it gives property owners false hopes. I think Pacifica can navigate its way through the Coastal Commission's approval process by emphasizing more realistic options for its long-term planning. Specifically, I favor facilitating the option of elevating existing structures by property owners rather than promoting the unrealistically expensive and ineffective approaches of armoring and sand renourishment. The relatively straightforward approach of raising elevation of structures will buy time indefinitely for a number of our low-lying neighborhoods, keeping them viable indefinitely. Although this action is mentioned in the current plan, it's not emphasized. In my opinion, this should be a central part of our long-term planning for low-lying neighborhoods. Realistic, long-term planning for the next 50 to 100 years can make a big difference towards helping neighborhoods adapt to changing conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Cherie Chan.
Hi there, Commissioners and staff. Thank you again for all your hard work in preparing this general plan update. I recognize what a lift it is and what a drain it is on all of our weekends to be reading this all weekend long over Super Bowl Sunday, even though the result wasn't what we wanted. To follow up on my neighbor Rob's comments, what we just cannot understand is why the planning commission is continuing to ask for a change to 1980 general plan. The designated land use for this area again is commercial with an emphasis on coastal-related or visitor-serving uses. That is the very point of the Coastal Commission, is that we should have access to this coast. This land was formerly part of the Archdiocese's property, as we all know, and I think there was always the understanding that this was part of the neighborhood and community commons. The document in the current general plan says, the document specifically points to the Carlson field and says, "This small oceanside commercial center," because it talked about, you know, the commercial uses for the field, "could be rejuvenated and expanded to become an attractive visitor-serving destination." We have done everything we can to work with the Calsons. We've had them on the PPCA board. We've, you know, we would love to have another golf course, we're happy with that. The designated, and of course, the designated use for this area is commercial with an emphasis on coastal-related or visitor-serving uses. That's what's already in place. This is also the existing land use designations when the Calsons bought the property in 1997. Nobody, the, I very much sympathize with people who bought their properties prior to the Coastal Act coming on board 40 years ago, but it certainly existed 20 years ago, and the reality of sea level rise continues to be a concern, and we only have so much money to not create new problems. The neighborhood will oppose, and we continue to oppose, the zoning change to commercial-residential mixed use. We are so grateful that you created a new land use designation called Low Intensity Visitor Serving Commercial. It is entirely consistent with the 1980 current general plan update, 1980 general plan. And that's what we're asking, is not to make a change that goes against history and goes against the progress that we've made in the climate science that we've already learned. So thank you again for surveying, and thank you for all your time, you know, in addition to all your regular jobs and work and stuff. And that's it.
Thank you. Aaron Gregory, please.
Again, so I'm the owner of 184 Paloma Avenue, which is in the new amendment, I think, to the plan. And I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to consider that, to the staff, the planning department, and thank you guys for hopefully taking a second to consider it before it gets voted on later. And that, excuse me, no, wife and I are here and happy to answer any questions later on, if need be, about the whole idea of what we're doing. But just to reiterate, pick on our little house, we're going to pick it up in the air, put a new story underneath, which sounds crazy, but it isn't that big of a deal. The house was moved there originally in the '60s. And then we're going to open a pretty cool, you know, very Pacifica unique business underneath. So, yeah, thank you so much. That's all I got to say. We're here. Thanks.
Thanks. Jeff Velozing.
Thank you for your time. I just want to advocate for protecting all of the Sharp Park area, the beaches, but the homes, the businesses, the places that we recreate, and everything, not just, not just the beaches themselves. So I'm against the managed retreat concept and hope that you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison West.
Thank you all so much for your time this evening. So I will echo my neighbors regarding the Carlson property. So here's something that I don't think anybody up there thinks about. First of all, I don't think any of you live in Pedro Point, so you don't understand 100% of what we, our position is. And the second is, your decisions pit neighbor against neighbor and property owner against property owner, and it is unfair to us. You have to look out for the interest. As Cherie so aptly said, this is a low-intensity visitor-serving area. So my question's to you, and I read, Christian, what the amendment is, what percentage of commercial and residential? So what I envision the Calsons doing is having a little 5-by-10 little shack that says "commercial." There you go. Planning Commission, we got a commercial. And then guess what? We have houses that are the size of this room stacked next to each other, and that's the residential. And then what you'll do to us is, they will come with a plan, because that's what it says, we can't figure things out until you have a plan. So you're going to, they're going to come, and you're going to go, wow, they put in all this work to put in this plan, we really feel like we have to approve the plan. So again, you pit us against them, and what you need to do is look back historically, as Cherie said. The Coastal Commission has given you numerous comments, and yet they seem to be ignored. So what is the percentage of commercial and residential? I think we are entitled to know, we're entitled to know before they start coming up with a plan. It is unfair to us that we come up here every time not knowing why you make the decisions that you do. What is the bias against our community to keep it in somewhat intact place? What are the size of the units? What about that wetland survey? What about the ditching that was done by the city with the Calsons that changed the wetland status? Why don't we talk about that? What I can tell you is, our neighborhood is very tired of having the same battle. We've invited you. Commissioner Berman, you and I emailed, right? I invited you to have a chat with me, and your suggestion was to have everyone together. We didn't want that, we wanted you. Commissioner Niblin, I wrote to you, maybe you didn't get my email, I didn't get the courtesy of a reply, we'd like to talk to you, invite you into our community so you can walk around and you can see what we're talking about. And I still keep that open to you, I would love to chat with you. Please consider what the residents say in our neighborhood, come visit us and see what we're talking about. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob Downing?
Hello. Thank you, guys, for your time. I'm a 61-year resident of Pacifica. I moved here from San Francisco when I was three with my family. For the last three years, I've been president of the Sharp Park Golf Club. And what you guys don't understand, we've done everything we can to save that place, and it's kind of, it's our family. And as a family, there's a lot of brothers and sisters out there. We have over 300 members in our club. There's numerous employees that depend on that place, and it generates a lot of money. And again, as president of the club, I think I speak for everyone. Don't let our family go away. We really, really love that place. Thank you.
Thanks. Cheryl Carlson?
So I'm present tonight to hear the greater clarification in your discussions regarding the language, which I didn't know, actually, the new language, which is supposedly in the back. Regarding the CRM designation, which our property is the only one with this designation, and the LD-I-20, the policy statement for the Calson property on developed San Pedro Avenue site, for example, which I said last time, without mixed use. Residential without mixed use is permitted as long as there is a component of commercial mixed use on the site. As I also mentioned previously, this had been discussed by Ms. Waremeister and other city leaders by email, and I shared that today at the meeting. I didn't know that it was going to be mentioned prior to me speaking. I also took time over the weekend looking at all of the August and September 2019 meetings, and I believe that city council members spoke to allowing residential use for our property in their discussions. As I said before, we've also asked, continue to ask for greater density. Our property is only one in the city with three to five units per gross acre. Even low density is defined as three to nine per gross acre. Since the density was decreased from, very substantially, from 22 units, then 10 to 15 or up to 15 was the former language, we're just asking for a better compromise. Thanks.
Thank you. Cliff, and if I butcher your name, you know, correct it for the record, Smeathers?
Very good.
I got it. Okay.
Cliff Smeathers, yes. So I've been living here for 30-plus years. I live in Park Pacifica, back of the valley, and I'd love to have oceanfront property. That'd be great. So, you know, I'm just saying, I'm up here talking, saying that I think you should reject this proposal, reject this plan. You know, the folks that live down here in the flatlands, that I call it, they pay their taxes every year. They keep everybody employed here in Pacifica. There is no reason you should abandon them. Absolutely no reason. You know, I think you just use -- I think, I think if you just use your God-given common sense and think about this for just the shortest bit of time, you'd come to the same conclusion that you should reject this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? I don't have any more cards, so if there's anybody that would like to speak, I'm going to call you up now, but there's nobody. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for deliberation. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, just to -- we'll make one point, actually, and I want to reiterate that I do think we really, any language that can be put in this plan to strengthen the protection of the golf course, I think, really needs to be put in there, not just for us, not just for council, but for San Francisco. Because I'm more worried about San Francisco, quite frankly, and what, and their zeal for housing and what they look at. So anything we can do to protect that golf course, I think, would be beneficial. I have a specific question regarding this new language. And a speaker raised it, and I'd been thinking about it as soon as I saw it. What is the ratio between commercial and residential that would be set and clear in this plan?
Sure. So I think some of the commenters' desires for that level of specificity are probably unreasonable for a document like the LCP or the general plan. A lot of those types of decisions about structure size and maximum floor areas and unit types and so forth would most typically be developed in the zoning, which implements the general plan and the LCP designations. With that said, the coastal residential mixed use designation on page 2-7 of the LCLUP does have some parameters which I think would begin to shape that conversation. In particular, it talks about non-residential development having a floor area ratio up to .5 floor area ratio, or FAR. It's not a minimum, but I think more importantly, the total floor area ratio, including residential and non-residential, cannot exceed 1.0. And so I think to the extent that someone is seeking to max out residential floor area, I think they're quickly going to come up against a requirement for a certain amount of viable commercial space as well. And so I think that helps to balance out those considerations, that it's going to be a truly residential site with a small amount of token commercial. I don't think that's likely to be the case. And certainly, the Commission will have another opportunity in shaping the zoning, which will follow on adoption of the LCLUP and the general plan, to get a lot more specific in that regard.
Thank you. My concern here is, is that when we talk about mixed use, the language here where it says housing may be clustered and uses, uses may be mixed vertically or horizontally. So I think, real quick, if you, if you don't make it vertical, I think you really move away from the mixed use that we're seeking and that I think people are used to, which is, and that we approve, have been approving for years here in town, which is commercial on the bottom, usually super token, unfortunately, and a ton of residential on top. But at least you have the commercial, and you have some residential on top. But here, if you do it horizontal, it's just homes. And then I do worry about what kind of commercial you're going to get if it's not, if it's just, just homes. So I think that, if it were me, this, this language, I mean, I know, I guess one person's unreasonable, is another person's arbitrary and capricious, which, to me, this, this one kind of just strikes me as, this would be fairly, this is so vague as to be, I think, falling within that definition of arbitrary and capricious. I would not sign on to this as it's written. It has to be more specific, because I'm worried it's going to be subject to a lot of abuse. So, and that just comes from, from, from history of just watching mixed use development here in town, and we've had complaints about it for years of there being very token commercial and a lot, and a lot of residential in areas that were supposed to be mixed use and in buildings that were supposed to be truly mixed use. So it's not like this is coming out of nowhere. This is coming out of experience in this town with that, and this has so many loopholes you could really drive a truck through. So I think we need to at least make it more specific. That's my comments for now.
Thanks. Commissioner Berman?
I guess, trailing off of that, is there an incentive to make it horizontally feasible to develop housing? Was there a request by the owner? Or is there any? Because I know the mixed use that's currently proposed in that area, I believe it's vertical. It's commercial on the bottom and housing on top, correct?
So I'm not sure which example you're referring to.
What's the, the mixed use development near?
Taproom?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. So that site's known as 535 San Pedro Avenue.
Right.
That is a vertical mixed use project.
Right.
So to the horizontal mixed use designation or inclusion of that, that building form, I think if you look at the mixed use designations as they're written in this document, they all include the flexibility to have horizontal mixed use development. It's not something that explicitly came from one individual property owner's or even a small number of property owners' requests. I would say collectively is the staff in dealing with very many property owners and potential project applicants. They have expressed that the vertical mixed use limitation, especially as it's written to be above the ground floor in the same building as commercial use, it's extremely limiting in the types of innovative projects that they can design, and in many ways to make the projects fit and feel more appropriate in a part of a neighborhood. So for example, in a highly commercial area, having a vertical mixed use project may actually be out of character, whereas tucking residential units to the rear where they're less visible, where their parking and other amenities might be better accommodated, would allow an overall improved site design. And so it was to achieve that end that we wrote in, in the, I think, the consultation draft back in September of 2019, the ability to have not only vertical, or quote-unquote the traditional mixed use that we're accustomed to, but also horizontal mixed use allowing residential uses in other configurations other than above the ground floor in the same building. So it was a staff-initiated change to the document that resulted from our interactions and dealings with prospective developers and property owners.
Okay. Thank you. That, I mean, I certainly support flexibility in land use designations, and, but if this is going to be, for this site in particular, my personal opinion is that the vertical mixed use element would be more in character, given the nearby developments. I guess, is this the only coastal resident, or mixed use, land use proposed, or is there another one?
No. The property immediately adjacent to the east, known as 505 San Pedro Avenue, is also designated CRMU in the LCLUP.
Which I think I would have the same opinion of. But then I guess, if in the future, somewhere else on the coastline, this designation could, I suppose, benefit from the horizontal designation? I don't know if it's possible to specify the language in LD-I-20 to eliminate the option of horizontal for this location in particular. I don't know if anyone else has input. I mean, I do understand that when a development comes along here, we will be looking at it in character with its surroundings, in which case that gives us another opportunity to voice our opinion of if it should be vertical or horizontal, but wondering other people's opinion.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yeah, I actually had a question, maybe a couple of thoughts as well. And one, I just wanted to clarify what I thought I heard Steph saying about sort of the, the use of this sort of vertical or horizontal sort of framing for a mixed use, and whether or not that was sort of common text in other, perhaps other areas of the city, or maybe even in other jurisdictions. I mean, I, I would concede, it's generally my understanding, that mixed use is done vertically, typically, but I take it that's probably language that exists in other, in other portions of the general plan, or maybe from other jurisdictions that sort of are framed similarly.
I would suggest this is a new concept for Pacifica. It's not language that exists elsewhere, except to the extent that separate uses that are not mixed, you know, exist in various configurations.
Right.
Throughout the city. So I think this is something where we're trying to innovate and provide flexibility. We're hearing from potential developers that vertical mixed use projects are not something that they think are appropriate for various sites that we talk about. And so it's no guarantee that a horizontal mixed use project would be approved or would necessarily be a permitted use. Perhaps it could be a conditional use as the zoning is developed to implement this concept, to provide the flexibility where a potential applicant demonstrates that it is the preferred design alternative. And so we think foreclosing that possibility by being overly prescriptive in the general plan and in the LCLUP is not the appropriate way from staff's perspective. We think the zoning very much could further refine this when we get to that phase of this process.
Well, and I just wanted to state my agreement with that proposition. I mean, this is a document that is extraordinarily labor-intensive and very difficult, frankly, to amend as you move forward. I think it would probably, in my view, be an inappropriate thing for us to be overly prescriptive with respect to this document, recognizing that we've got tools like zoning, recognizing even in the coastal zone, that's its own kind of heavy lift. But I think that recognizing that this is a document that's intended for long-term planning, we ought to frankly afford this kind of flexibility. And if there's a determination down the road that with respect to this particular parcel, you know, it's appropriate to limit this kind of development to vertical, I think we can have that conversation around, a conversation about the zoning, and maybe some form of an overlay or something that pertains specifically to this parcel.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. In general, allowing flex, allowing us flexibility moving into the future is a good thing. I would say with this particular parcel, this is kind of a unique one for us. This is, I would say, I would argue, it's our largest commercial parcel of land zoned for commercial only in the city. I know we have a difference of opinion on that, but I feel like this was zoned commercial from the beginning, and we don't, we've, we've never really found out whether that was ever properly repealed, which I, which I find in and of itself kind of a difficulty to get around, because I feel that the reticence to even look at that issue is arbitrary and capricious. But, and just as a side note, for us to get rid of our largest commercial piece of property and rezone it basically residential, when we're already a bedroom community, and we're, to me, long-term planning, I think, would dictate otherwise. I think we need to keep some of the commercial in this town, because we, as we know, just a few years ago, we live and die by property tax. Like 50%, 60% of our budget is that, and related uses, schools, things like that. So we need to keep the commercial. That being said, this is a unique piece of property. I think if we, if we, I mean, I don't even want to give up the fact that this is just commercial, but if we would adopt this language, and we did say it's horizontal, I think we are creating an entitlement to homes, basically. And I, and I just don't think that's the way to go. And I think we could make a decision here that if you're going to do mixed-use commercial, you do mixed-use commercial. Residential on top, commercial on the bottom. And I think that I hear, what I hear is a lot of deference to the developers and to the project applicant, but I'm not hearing like a lot of deference to the community and what they want. And I think we need to have that. We have one person get up here and speak about the fact that overwhelmingly, they reject this proposal that this should be residential. And, you know, where's this coming from? I have to kind of echo that. Where is this coming from? It just seems, it just, I don't understand myself where the sudden shift in policy came. It would be interesting to know why. So again, I just, this, this new language here, I just don't, I think it's too loosely written, and I think we can get more prescriptive as to this parcel. And I, the rest of the plan, I think there's, there's some ability to keep things flexible, but I think developers are smart people. I used to work six years for the biggest home developers in the country, and they can figure out how to do mixed-use commercial on this property vertically, guaranteed. That's the end of my comment.
I guess, question for staff, like, how can we proceed with, with voting on this item with these sort of open questions? What would you recommend?
So I would, I would recommend that there be further deliberation on this matter. And I think that because we're talking about a, a pretty focused policy or two here, that after we, we hear some deliberation and get more direction, we can assist you in making a motion, you know, if that's where the Planning Commission is going with your recommendation to city council.
So I guess the question for my fellow Commissioners, do we feel prepared to, to develop a motion around this, given the information we have?
I think so.
Okay.
I think there's more to talk about, but I'm, I'm convinced we can I think there's more to talk about, but I'm convinced we can get there.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we can get four votes for it, but that's.
Yeah, I think it would, I think it would be tough to kind of continue our entire approval of the local coastal land use plan to council, just based off of one item. I like staff's suggestion of maybe we could come to some census at the end of our deliberation on this item, but I guess kind of for a second, separating from this one item, I think in general, I'm in agreeance with the majority of the, the land use plan, especially in regards to some of the comments that we did here today, that I also want to point out just really quickly, because I know we'll want to get back to the Pedro Point property. But the idea managed retreat, I know it's absolutely not applicable right now, but I want to reiterate that I like that every couple of years, every five years, we'll revisit any idea that may be applicable. Also, the new definition of substantial exterior structural modifications, I think it's in, it's page G-dash-nine in the land use plan. It identifies exceptions to the redevelopment in the coastal zone. For example, natural disaster, you're able to, I believe, reconstruct your home within ten percent of its footprint. And I really like that staff put in the effort with the coastal commission to, you know, try to propose this. Another item, I guess those are the major points. I just want to get those out of the way.
Okay. I guess the question for, for, you know, our legal, is there anything that we have to be careful of with regard to drafting a motion regarding the Pedro Point property that could affect, you know, the, the plan globally, or, you know, or other issues?
I'm not understanding your question. So is the, is the question whether you can carve out the Pedro Point from the motion?
Yeah, well, can we carve it out, or if we try to include it as a, as an, as an item, could it affect other parts of the, this plan?
I think that's probably a question better for staff, in terms of whether it would have impacts on other portions of the LCLUP.
Sure. So I think that depends on the approach that the commission would take. So we have really two parts to this discussion of the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site. The first is addressing the coastal residential mixed-use land use designation, which would have global effect. In practice, today, as the document is written, it would affect the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site and the 505 San Pedro Avenue site to its east. In the future, the council could seek to apply that designation to other properties, and so it may have a broader effect than intended today. The more direct and precise way, I think, to address the particular undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site is to address policy LDI-20, which is the policy which is already in the document, further tailoring the coastal residential mixed-use designation to that site specifically. And so it would probably be my recommendation to tailor that policy rather than the broader CRMU designation.
Okay. Commissioner Bigstick? You've been waiting.
Some of my question was addressed. I don't mean to belabor anything. One of the rallying calls from the majority of the folk who were bringing this up was simply the question of, how did we get to this point from the original designation in 1980? And in my recollection, at some point, there's kind of this missing link chunk, which we haven't necessarily seen yet. So if you could briefly go through that history for a moment and maybe tell us about that missing link chunk and why we have that question mark, I'd like that refresher before finishing that deliberation.
So I think the missing link chunk has to do with some of the zoning that came after the 1980 general plan amendment. But if we, if we kind of just continue with the general plan and LCP documents, in 1980, it's designated commercial, and that also has a mixed-use component that's allowable. So actually, in 80, the density allowed on the site in the general plan is much greater than what is proposed now.
That was my recollection, thank you. So after that, it sounds like the lion's share of the last bit of what we're deliberating is horizontal versus vertical. And if it's a major sticking point, I'm happy to vote along with getting rid of the horizontal component, although in general, I'd absolutely favor the flexibility, especially if keeping that flexibility in now means that down the road, we could hammer out specifically whether or not we actually want it. But if that is a sticking point, I'd be happy to just take that horizontal language out so that we can move it along.
Vice Chair Rubenstein, if I could just further nuance the discussion the commission may have. I think there's two parts to the horizontal mixed-use. There's the part which would allow an attached residential use to be attached to a commercial use in a horizontal configuration, but in the same building. And then there's that further component, which we clarified in the exhibit presented to you tonight, where the horizontal mixed-use is taken even further, where residential uses could be fully detached from commercial uses. So it would help to get clarity in the extent to which the commission might be interested in removing or altering the horizontal component, either in its entirety or just that second chunk.
Do you mean the detached is the second chunk?
Second chunk being the fully detached residential use, yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to talk about that nuance? I mean, I'm.
No, I see, I would be in favor of that, because, so the revised language states residential uses may be constructed attached to or detached from commercial uses. I think possibly removing the detached from maybe, may help the conversation.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Berman, you're reading from policy LD.
Oh, yes.
I-20.
LDI-20, yes, sorry.
Commissioner, anyone?
Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions, but I, as long as we're talking about it. Again, I, again, would state that my own hesitation about sort of limiting ourselves now to, in ways that frankly may not be helpful or conducive to the best planning and the best ideas that may come forward in the future. So, you know, I'm not necessarily suggesting that I will die on, but I, again, I think that I'd prefer to defer to staff and to the, you know, the design professionals and the developers who may come forward in the future with good ideas. I think that we want to make sure we've got good protection for the public around these sorts of things, but I don't see the point, frankly, of being overly prescriptive at this phase, but that's just my four or five cents on that. A couple of other questions. I was just reading through Mr. Harris's letter, and he had a couple of points in here I just wanted to sort of ask for some clarification on. And I think actually Mr. Steigbark had a, maybe a comment that sort of was of similar, that ran along similar lines. It was on page two of Mr. Harris's letter. He lists, I don't know, it looks like six or seven, maybe it's five points of a particular concern, one of which was a recurrent, what he calls a recurring failure of the post-consultation draft to adequately or accurately describe and reference the goals of, for the draft coastal plan update and adaptation plan adopted by city council. And again, I think Mr. Steigbark's proposed amendment sort of raises a similar concern. I was curious about what staff's perspective was on that. Do you believe that those notions are specifically stated, or are they adequately sort of reflected in the, sort of the product itself? I was just curious as to whether there was any comment to that.
Yeah, sure. So those goals were adopted by council in preparation for the process that we went through with the C-level rise adaptation planning that developed the policies that went into chapter six. And so those goals are represented in chapter six. They are clearly stated in there. And then they, the, the policies that made it through chapter six are representative of meeting those goals as well. So I feel like staff may feel like that those have been representative. Part of Richard's comments are, are also addressing the, the environmental justice language.
Sure.
And, and, in regards to the coastal commission's EJ policy. And so we have added language in response to that policy and to, to prepare our own actions to improve our EJ, environmental justice.
Thank you. Just a couple of other questions. One of my fellow commissioners, I think, raised quite appropriately that, you know, San Francisco has some interest in the golf course, being the, being the owner of it. I was curious about whether or not we had heard from the city and county of San Francisco with respect to kind of this latest iteration of document, whether they weighed in in any way on, on the matter? And if so, what did they have to say about it?
We have not received any public comments from the city and county of San Francisco.
Interesting, thank you. And the other comment I had, I, just one of the public commenters had made some reference to, I think what she called the 1977 remodel trap. And I just wanted to make sure that, one, I wanted to make sure I kind of had a common understanding with staff as to what, you know, you know, where we were going with that and what our response is to that, I think, really legitimate framing of things.
Sure. So I think the best I can surmise the concerns of the commenter, I think there's been this pervasive fear on the part of some people participating in the vulnerability assessment and adaptation planning, that an extreme interpretation of existing development and redevelopment and remodeling would somehow preclude people from making modest, routine improvements to their property.
Right.
Triggering this new development status, which would then cause them to have to demolish their homes or otherwise be limited in some way in the use. We're sensitive to those concerns, and we've tried to go out of our way to make clear that that's not the case, certainly in this draft document. I think maybe the most notable examples are the definition that we drafted of substantial exterior structural modification.
Yep.
On page G-dash-nine.
Yep.
That exempts routine maintenance such as, it's explicitly stated, removal, replacement, or maintenance of non-structural components, such as siding and roofing materials and windows.
Right.
So that's not a type of improvement that's going to trigger new development status. And even in cases where a substantial exterior structural modification has occurred, the policy language explicitly states that the new portions of the structure must comply. The existing, any existing non-conforming portions that are not modified may remain as they are.
Okay.
And so we've, we've tried our best to address and tamp down those concerns. Additionally, concerns about the date, the 1977 date that you often hear. As we've defined existing structure in this document, there's a few different categories, but I think of note, it's a structure that was lawfully constructed prior to the certification date of the LCLUP. So that would presumably be a date sometime in 2020 or 2021. And so that 1977 date, or lack of building permit history and so forth, that's not an issue as the existing structure definition is written, and it's not an issue as the substantial exterior structural modification definition is written. In that latter case, that definition is cumulative from the date of certification of the LCLUP.
Right. Well, I just want to state that I really appreciate staff's work in, sort of being really creative around this and trying to work with the coastal commission staff to address these kinds of really legitimate concerns. And my support, frankly, for what we've got is really premised on the good work that staff's done in addressing that point in particular.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, no, and I want to thank Commissioner Nebelen and staff for addressing that issue. That was, that was my next, actually, was one of my next two questions, so asked and answered on that one. My, so going back to Commissioner Bigstick's question about Yoldi zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be wrong on this, but wasn't, at one point, the Colson property zoned, at least from the city standpoint, as commercial, commercial recreational?
Yes, and in fact, it remains in that zoning designation to this day. I think what's not apparent, maybe to the casual observer, is that the city council, in fact, lawfully adopted an ordinance that repurposed the CR zoning to take on all of the development standards and uses of the C2 zone. And the council did that, I believe, in 1982. And so it's clear from staff's perspective that it was the city council's intent at that time to impart C2 zoning standards on CR-zoned properties. And that includes mixed-use residential.
But that was, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that new interpretation of the commercial recreational in 82, when it was previously just commercial before that, correct? Well, that, that new, I was badly asked, that new interpretation in 82 by the city council, was that ever, that was legally done and approved by the coastal commission?
So the city council lawfully adopted the ordinance. I think where we have less clear information is whether that zoning change, not an interpretation, but a change in the zoning, was certified by the coastal commission. We do not have a definitive answer to that, but I think we've taken a position as a staff that it's not material to this conversation and that we're doing a forward-looking policy document, the zoning will ultimately reflect and implement what's in this land use plan. And so we think the focus is best placed on what should the use be, not what may it have been and was it certified and what's actually applicable today. The city council has the authority to change that in light of the community's needs and desires and wants, as well as applicable legal limitations on the property owner's right to have economic use of the property.
Yeah, and I appreciate that point of view. I just, I just think we set off on a, with a presumption that it was never, that it was never just commercial back in our study sessions, and launched from there with that presumption as opposed to the other presumption that actually this was a commercial piece of property, commercial only at one point. And kind of the general consensus was this should at least be mainly commercial, which again, brings me back to why this is problematic for me, because it really skews towards residential, which I don't think was the intent of, of anyone back in, in 1980 at least. So certainly there's some investor-backed expectations, home, you know, people who own homes in Pedro Point, who, back then, who would be, you know, wondering why the sudden shift to residential, like, centric as opposed to commercial. So I just want to clarify that it's, it's not as clear-cut as it seems, that, oh yeah, it's always been, it's always been residential. It really hasn't. And it's been, and that's been in dispute since like the beginning.
Commissioner Bigstick?
So there's nothing about this that seems particularly clear-cut to me. So first of all, before I deliberate a little, at what moment in time, if ever, was this a purely commercial piece of property? And at what moment in time did that begin to shift?
I'm not sure we have the answer to when it was ever a commercial-only piece of property. I think we have information from the 1980 general plan and LCLUP that it was commercially designated, which, as Director Waremeister indicated, included mixed-use residential development. I'm not sure, my belief is that the CR zoning likely predated the 1980 general plan, the commercial recreation zoning. But in short order, after adoption of the 1980 LCLUP, the council took that rather significant action to change the zoning standards for CR-zone sites, to have them be C2-zone sites. And so I think to pursue any other line of reasoning is making a legal argument rather than a policy argument. The city council of this city intended that site to be a C2-zone site for all intents and purposes, in terms of uses inclusive of mixed-use residential. And so that's the presumption that I guess staff put forward that some might disagree with. But we think from a policy standpoint, the city council of the city of Pacifica decided that mixed-use residential and commercial was a permissible use for the site.
So I'm about to start thinking in terms of looking to the future, but before I do that, I just want to make sure I'm absolutely clear. Prior to 1980... Prior to 1980, are we saying that definitively there was a moment in time in which it was commercial, only commercial residential, wasn't a thought in the head of what it could be used for? Or are we saying that prior to 1980, even then, we're not quite sure?
So my research of the CR zoning standards as they were prior to 1980, I forget the exact date, but I think perhaps as far back as ordinance number two, which I think was the city's first zoning ordinance. That CR zoning district did not include mixed-use residential. And so to the extent that one wants to find a commercial-only period in time, perhaps it was when that zoning district was enacted. I don't know the date that the CR zoning was first applied to the site, but it was in place as of 1980, best I can tell. And so I think one could make a reasonable determination, but not a conclusive one.
So as of 1980, there starts being at least wiggle room for interpretation, yes, there could be residential on this property at that time?
So I think certainly with the council's enactment of the ordinance in 1982, redefining uses and development standards for CR-zone sites to be C2 standards, I think that's certainly a point at which that residential use of the site was intended by our local decision-makers.
So certainly I have no desire to be cavalier with this piece of property, far from it. I think it's very difficult to deliberate on this piece of property. I do not live in that neighborhood and I'm hesitant to, it's hard for me up here to think in terms of what I think it should be when, at the end of the day, it's probably not going to directly affect me, at least this week. My feeling so far is that when we did deliberate as one ginormous body between us and the council, we seemed to try to strike some sort of compromise between what I think has clearly been the neighborhood's desire for there not to be residential and the owner's desire that what apparently is supposed, based on data going back as far as 1982, is that probably they should be able to use this land in terms of residential along with, as a mixed use. So right now, I'm about as comfortable as I can be with residential being as low as we've currently designated it to go forward. And again, I'm open to that conversation about whether or not to nix the horizontal, it was suggested, maybe we should just take away that part that's detached horizontal. And I'm okay with that. From my perspective, there's nothing certain here, but I'm willing to go forward based on the accommodations we've been trying to make and this last accommodation that we can try to make. And I think ultimately it's going to get hashed out in council. I've had a couple of conversations with council members and I think that by and large, their concern is very largely for the property owner. And so I think that as we're sussing it out now, these policies are going into that venue where very likely there will be discussion in terms of what that property owner's going to get to do with it, with people who are very sympathetic to the plight of somebody just trying to figure out what to do with their own property. So I think that we've taken it about as far as we can, and that's where I'm at right now.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. There's a, we have hashed this out quite a bit and I don't want to belabor the point. I think what my kind of closing remark would be on this would be, we have a history of this property predominantly being considered with a significant commercial aspect to it. And so to further accommodate the property owner's stated desire tonight, even get more housing in there than even we'd already kind of agreed to, and considering that when they purchased it, it was actually well-known as a commercial designated property mainly, at least, that we should skew towards the commercial visitor center zoning options that we've got, or at least not create more entitlement for home building than there already exists, which I feel like this is the, gets, accommodates the developer more than we need to do. I think some certainty, you know, when I represented home builders, the one thing that home builders loved was certainty. Just, I don't care really even what the environmental regulations, what the land use regulations, what the zoning regulations are, just give me certainty and I will figure it out. Believe me, I can make a profit on this. And that's what they want. And I think that let's give them that, let's give the, for God's sakes, let's give the community in the neighborhood, the people who have to live next door to this thing, some sense of like what is going to be built there? And is it going to be a bunch of detached horizontal homes or is it going to be something that at the end of the day would truly be a mixed-use commercial? Which I think would be a significant concession, but if that, you know, if, you know, Commissioner Big Stick, you mentioned, you know, I think you're probably right, some of the council members are foremost in their mind is the, is thinking about the owner of the property, maybe as, you know, that's a discussion for another day, whether foremost in their mind should be the community that lives there. But, you know, at least we should skew more towards commercial, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Berman?
I think kind of pulling together many different points from my fellow commissioners that I agree with many different points. I think more specific definition for this lot in particular, or this area in particular, would be beneficial, and I agree with that. I agree with Commissioner Nebelen that it doesn't quite belong in this land use plan unless staff had a recommendation of a ratio idea that we could add to LD I-20. I don't think we would want, I personally would not be in favor of changing any language of the coastal residential mixed-use land use specifically, more so just for this lot in particular. But I'm not overly passionate of needing that in this language. I am more passionate about removing the detached aspect of LD I-20. But the thing I'm most passionate about is I think we do have to respect that this lot is privately owned and they're currently, from what I recall from previous discussions, there's no definition of public use to this lot. I mean, I know people take their dogs there, they use coastal access through there, which, what's great about staff's development of the local coastal land use plan is that there's incorporation of coastal access, there's incorporation of wetland rehabilitation. And I love that and that makes me really excited for this lot. I am in favor of some type of development in this lot that provides economic benefit to the owner and benefits to the city both economically and from a community standpoint. So I'm, I would like to come to a resolution altogether and hopefully pass along the entirety of the local coastal land use plan to council. But I don't know if we'll come to a specific diagnosis of this lot today.
I agree with a lot of what you've said. Commissioner Nebelen?
Well, I just wanted to state that yet again, Commissioner Berman has kind of, I think nailed it. I mean, I think her framing of it is spot-on. Notwithstanding my own reservations with respect to sort of constraining the language in LD 120, I would be amenable to deleting the language that contemplated perhaps detached development from commercial uses, if that were a way to move things forward. I think that otherwise, I would be in favor of moving this all forward with that one change to LD 120.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yeah, first I wanted to respond that I think in thinking in terms of the owner's right to decide what to do with the property, they're not just thinking in terms of the owner's rights. I've heard from at least one council member that they were thinking in terms of an affordable housing use that perhaps could be an option, which would overall benefit the community if that were there. That being said, I absolutely favor what seems to be congealing as a consensus toward eliminating the detached language so that we have something verging on a compromise that can get us forward.
Okay, I mean, it sounds like four of us are somewhat in agreement on that. Would anybody else like to comment on that and perhaps make a motion?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with moving this plan forward and removing that detached language from LD I-20.
No.
And I'm in agreement with removing that as well.
Okay.
And I think, Commissioner Berman, thank you for making an excellent recommendation.
Thank you.
I was wondering if maybe staff could help us make sure that whatever motion we make sort of encompasses everything we've been talking about here. I know there were a few moving pieces.
Sure. I think we just need a moment to line up the appropriate language and then can read it for the commission's consideration.
Thank you.
Great.
Chair?
I do have other comments that aren't related to Colson.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So, three comments. First, the idea of strengthening golf course language from Commissioner Campbell, which appealed to me. Is that something that is a workable option tonight that we're considering or is it just a general comment that it would be good to strengthen that language?
Is that for staff?
Probably, unless Commissioner Campbell wishes to...
Well, I just, one of the concrete things, and Steph kind of got there, although I think I would adopt the language that, that was specifically requested by the Alliance, which was about the stormwater flows into the course. I think it would be good to just get that notion that we should prevent that stormwater flow into the course in as many places as possible, just to get at that issue, because that's a significant, I think, issue for the course and for a lot of other things.
Are you advocating for specific language being inserted or are you satisfied with where we're at?
I think where the Alliance advocated for inserting it would be, I can't see the harm in it, so, in my previous comments, so. But I'm open to suggestion and I don't want to be unnecessarily duplative either. I mean, if it's, if that concept's in there, then that would be fine too.
I guess that's a question for staff and for legal, that becomes an issue for other developer, you know, other areas.
I think having the kind of companion policies elsewhere in the general plan is sufficient. I think that there's a lot of detail here to consider. I know there's endangered species issues on the golf course, historic flow issues. So I would suggest leaving as-is and I think our engineering division and probably San Francisco engineering would need to maybe put their heads together on how to address this.
Okay. Thank you. There was a comment about the EQ basin, and again, just, I want to touch on that really quickly, my understanding being it's not in the coastal zone, so that's why it's not here. But it does mitigate a great amount of water flow into the coastal zone. Is there any reason to bring it up in this document?
So it mitigates potential flooding because of the inability of our water recycling plant to accommodate large flows all at once, so it's metering it out to the, to the plant. So I think, I think overall, it's not impacting the amount of water to the, to the Clark Creek, I guess, is where it will ultimately end up.
And then my final question for commission is just simply, is there consensus that that change to the 184 Paloma Avenue is consistent with what we're going for? Okay.
And we do have a suggested amendment, so looking at LD I-20, and you'll see where in kind of the middle of the paragraph, you have vertically or horizontally in red. So the very next sentence is where we're proposing changes or suggesting changes, and that would be residential uses shall be constructed attached to commercial uses, period.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Would anybody like to propose a motion that succinctly covers what we just went through?
Be happy to make the motion if no one else does.
And I would just say that that's going to be the second, the alternative, second alternative motion in the packet with the added change to LD-I-20.
Okay. Commissioner Nebelen?
So then it's the second motion on packet page eight then, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so would be my motion that we move that the planning commission finds adoption of the proposed resolution is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, adopts the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report to recommend that the city council should adopt a resolution certifying that the local coastal program, that's the same as the local coastal land use plan, is that right? It is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the California Coastal Act, incorporates the substantive amendments described in section 3B of the staff report into the post-consultation draft LCLUP to be transmitted to the city council, and further incorporates the land use designation change to mixed-use neighborhood requested by the, I'm sorry, as was just described by staff, is that...
This is the Paloma...
I'm sorry, oh, this is the Paloma, okay.
So after that...
Requested by the property owner of 184 Paloma Avenue is described in section 3C of the staff report and the amendment that staff just shared with us to LD 120, to delete reference to detached from commercial uses, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference. That's my motion.
Does everybody agree with that? Okay. Second? Second the motion? Commissioner Berman? Yep?
I second the motion.
Everybody vote? Thank you. Oh, so we have a motion passed. Anybody grieved by the actions of the commission have 15 days to, or 10 calendar days to appeal in writing to the city council? Next up are communications, commission communications.
Do you guys have a calendar or business days to appeal?
What's that?
Do you guys have a calendar or business days?
This is not the time to respond, unless the chair wants to acknowledge the public at this point.
Yeah, it's 10 calendar days. Yep. Okay. Commissioner Kraske?
I don't know, I think it's just leftover.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Big Stick?
Sure. And that was wrapped up in the discussion. Thank you, Commissioner Berman, for bringing us to an equitable solution. So over the course of the last couple of weeks, I had the good fortune to attend the Sharp Park specific planning meeting over at the Little Brown Church a few nights back. It was widely attended, everybody came with wonderful ideas, there was Pacifica Jack Cheese that was incorporated with the meeting toward the end, for those who had the wisdom to pursue it. And a good time was had by all, but also the community was able to really get involved in hashing out what they want their community to be. So it was, it was a really positive experience and a positive exchange of thought, and I was very happy to be there. So thank you all for making it happen. So thank you all for making it happen.
Thanks. Staff communication?
Sure. I wanted to announce this is related to the appeal that you just read or the opportunity to appeal. This recommendation is planned to go to city council on Monday, February 24th, and so that's already happening. Obviously, this is a legislative matter, so council will be acting on this and anyone who would like to come and provide public comments, welcome to do so. I wanted to thank Commissioner Big Stick for mentioning the Sharp Park specific plan meeting. There's more activity coming up that we haven't scheduled quite yet on the specific plan, so please stay tuned to your Plan Pacifica emails. And lastly, the city council has tentatively scheduled the commission and committee annual reports meeting where I think we all can do it at once, we come in early. And so if you could put on your calendars for May 11th, and I'll provide updates if that date happens to change.
Great, thank you. Well, it's a time, we'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All right, thank you. That includes the meeting.